I'd like to call the Leamster Planning Board for December 6, 2021. It's at 6:30 to the order. I have an open public meeting for a site plan application. The 122 Granite Street map, 126 Plaza One, Leamster High School Athletic Fields, City of Leamster project. Do I have a representative?
Good evening. My name is Anthony Cleese. I'm with Whitman and Bingham Associates, Design Engineers for the project here on behalf of the City of Leamster. Also here tonight is the School Department Athletic Director, Isabel Lozick. So to start off, I'll try and get you familiar with the high school campus if you're not already. This is an existing conditions plan. So the dark kind of mass of rectangles here is the existing high school. You have Granite Street, top right of the plan here. You have Kingman Drive, which is an internal driveway through the high school campus. And then kind of behind the rear of the school, we have a series of three athletic fields, a lower field, a middle field, and an upper field. And then you have the residential development of Colonial Drive, which is behind the school. And so if you're familiar with, again, the rear of the campus, there are three athletic fields, three different tiers that's used currently for various sports practices mostly throughout the year. So as was mentioned, the proposed project is to expand the existing athletic field to accommodate a new track and field, which is located here in the upper and middle field area, and then also a softball and multipurpose recreational field. For years now, most of the, a lot of the student athletes and sports take place at Doyle Field, which is where there's a track. The track has been in disrepair and unrunnable. So this school hasn't had home meets in quite some time. And then also the softball program uses the last elite fields in other part of Leamster. And so a lot of students, student athletes have to leave campus and go to these other venues to participate in athletics. So what the city is trying to do is bring those kids, keep them on campus with new fields to the rear of the complex. If you're familiar with the school, there's a parking lot up here that exists, and there's a fire road, a small gravel road that goes along the back of the school to get access there. Not a great access. So one of the parts of this project is to improve that access in and around the school by expanding this parking lot and creating a 24-foot wide driveway to get to the back to better accommodate just vehicles in general, emergency vehicles, buses. And that'll help get back to the rear of the school. There's an existing gravel parking lot there. Going to expand that to accommodate more parking. And then there's an existing driveway that comes down. I'm going to upgrade that and make it a little bit wider and then travel back to the rear of the school. The access to the fields, we're creating a 20-foot wide driveway, wide enough for emergency vehicles to get up to the fields. And that brings you up into the complex. Because these three fields that exist there today are basically at three different elevations, there's going to be a lot of earthwork that'll have to take place. And if you're familiar with a track or any athletic field, they're essentially flat. And you can see the size of a track, it's pretty large. So there's some cuts and fills that need to take place to, to make these grades work. This field is very similar to the lower field and middle field. And then we have a retaining wall that would be proposed in and around here to then tier up to the track and field area to kind of step that up and balance some of the cuts and fills. In the middle of the two venues, we have, you see in brown there, two buildings. This building here is proposed restrooms and concession stand. And the intent there is to continue to work with the Center for Technical Education Innovation at the School Department and have the kids help design and build that building as, as part of the project. And then also we have a storage building to help accommodate the equipment that's going to be needed here, you know, just for maintenance of the fields, but also storage of track and field equipment, softball equipment, things like that. And then we have bleachers on either side of, of the track and field. And we have a small set of bleachers there for the softball. We're proposing lighting for these venues. And so we have these long dark rectangle, I know it's tough to see, but we have lighting in and around both this multipurpose and softball field, as well as lighting along the track and field area there. Typical stadium lighting that you would see in many complexes, 70 to 80 foot tall poles to properly and safely light the athletic fields for competition. We've been working with Musco lighting on that, helping design and, and working as best it can to use directional lighting and shielded lighting to try and minimize as much spillage off the property as, as possible. The utilities for the project, utilities for the concession stands here, there's a water line that exists in the rear of the school. We're going to extend that up and service the building. Stormwater, the campus has existing stormwater systems. There actually are, are old sub drains back in this, in this field area. I believe the school was built in the mid-'60s. And so that old corrugated mill perforated pipe drains that are there aren't working very well. So all that's going to be scrapped. We're going to have new, new stormwater system there that's made up of underground detention systems in the parking lot. We're going to use the sub-stone layer of the fields to detain some stormwater as well and then tie it all back into the existing stormwater system. The sewer, the unfortunate part with the sewer is there is no sewer located in the rear of the high school. Sewer comes out the front and then the sewer line actually goes over here through wetlands into the main trunk line here. So we're going to have to bring sewer all the way along to the front of the school to do that. You see here, there's some wetlands that are on the other side of the existing parking lot. We've bent a conservation commission with a request for termination applicability, and they've issued that, that determination as a negative determination. So we've just completed that process with, with the cons going for that. So I think one of the other added benefits to the campus, the main goal is to provide athletic fields to the school. But I think one of the improvement is this emergency access driveway, which improves access immensely to the back of the school. But also we're adding 100 parking spaces to the campus. School will always need parking. And so by adding parking along this driveway and expanding this parking lot, we'd need 100 parking spaces for the school besides that of athletic events, just in the course of their mobile operation. So that's a brief overview or a long winded overview? Any questions? I can get into any details you'd like.
Okay. That sounds good to me. I'd like to go over to the audience. Do I have anyone in the audience who they can make comments or questions?
The field's grass?
Yes, sir. Please identify yourself.
Bert Huschel. Hang your address, please. 236 Pierce Street.
Would you like?
Are the fields grass or artificial? So proposal is for both of these, these fields to be artificial traffic. And is it always open to the public at all or not at all? That's, I believe, still things to be worked out with the city. I think the intent, the primary intent is, is for student athletes and not necessarily open to adult activities and things like that. But there may be, the city may allow, you know, people to enter easily for walking or things like that because there, we are showing a walking path kind of around the perimeter there. So that's something that's still being discussed, I think, and worked out at the, at the city level.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Joe Quinn, 391 Union Street. Very supportive of this project. I have grandchildren in the city school system, and this is a long time coming. And so I'm glad the mayor and the city council are both supportive. And I hope that the planning board, you know, gets this approved as quickly as possible so it can be moving forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Do I have any questions or comments?
John, I'll answer some questions.
Okay, Ford.
Thank you. The only department I had come that came from the police department raised concern about traffic in already difficult traffic areas. Can you speak to that a little?
Sure. So we're not proposing any traffic improvements. Traffic study wasn't performed. But the nature of the improvements, I think, we'll start with that with the improvements. It's going to help traffic on the campus itself. As mentioned, we have fire access back there that isn't very good. That's going to help the flow of traffic in and around and getting to the back of the school. If you've ever driven behind the school here, you have kind of a blind corner at the, at the end of that building. So we have two means, two good means of access to the rear of the school, which is going to help with that. The existing access points to the surrounding neighborhoods are not changing. We've gone through a couple of series of neighborhood meetings over the years, and one of our earlier versions had this driveway coming right out to Granite Street. And through some of the discussion with the neighbors, some of the neighbors didn't like it. So changed our design and kept the integral there. All those turning movements can still operate and will still work, work fine. As far as traffic flow and volumes, the expectation is the student athletes are all here on campus. So now they're going to, you know, leave their classrooms, go to the locker room, change, and come right onto the field, where today they're either getting on buses or jumping in their cars and driving to Doyle. So the expectation is that you actually may see a decrease in traffic at that main dismissal time, which is where you have your major flow of traffic. So we don't expect really to be an increase at that peak time of dismissal. And that's a typical practice days. On, on game days, you're now you're going to have, you're going to have people coming to campus. You're going to have parents, grandparents coming to watch the other kids play. You're going to have visitor teams arriving, but that typically happens after dismissal. So you get that major rush of traffic leaving, then you have the influx of, of other people using the venue. So the expectation is it's not going to compound any existing traffic flow. It's going to, you know, kind of go and off, off that peak, peak time. So there isn't an expectation that there's going to be any, any more traffic issue than, than what they're dealing with now in the roads. Starting to accommodate the flow of traffic. This road's 34 feet wide. Kingman Drive is about 20 to 30 feet wide. So as it operates today, it'll continue to operate, but those traffic flows should be offset from that major dismissal time.
On the, the question of traffic, I've been by there several times at dismissal time. I mean, you got cars all over the place lined up. Have they made any accommodations to change the queuing where people, where parents can go to? Any discussion with that?
No, no, no changes to the, to the existing area of campus in there. That's, that hasn't, that's not changing as part of this proposal anyways.
Any accommodation for that? Do you see any accommodation for?
Not that I'm aware of at this point. Again, I think some of the expectation is that you're going to see less kids leaving campus and rushing out to get to their practice at Doyle. But as far as the existing operation of the school, there's no plans to change that or change driveways or things like that.
Okay.
Can we, can we talk about the, the elevation a little bit? So the softball field is on the lower field, and I see a wall.
Yep.
How tall is the wall? And it looks like we've got a little red field.
So we have, so again, this, this field is lower. This wall gets up to about eight to 10 feet high, if I remember correctly, in this corner here. We have fencing that goes along, along here and then stops because this is also a rectangular multipurpose field. So at softball time, the school have to end up getting some kind of portable fencing to utilize that for, for softball. We did try to maintain a minimum three-foot area to get between the wall and the fencing so you have access in and around there to get in and around the field.
And it looks like a, it looks like a walking path there from the backstop up to the?
Yeah, so it's again, add access, help access for maintenance and for, and for people. You come down here and then you just go onto the grass and you can walk, walk along here. This shaded gray here is a subdrain at the toe of the slope. These dark lines that you see on the edges, those are supposed contours. So you can see the tight together steep slopes. We have a cut all through here, here. So to intercept some of the groundwater, just beginning to feel at the back of the campus, you know that, you know, in the spring it gets wet, it gets wet because we have some series of subdrains. This, I'm putting a gray things on here. This little gray spot there, that's for ADA accessibility for people that want to watch this game. This is, this still meets grade, but doesn't meet all of the codes of ADA for cars accessibility. So right off of this path, we have a little spot there for ADA accessibility to watch for games.
What's going on here in this little corner of the field?
Yep, so, so this was an area that was kind of earmarked as a pavilion of sorts. What's this rectangle is kind of denoting, but it's basically, you know, just an area of gathering, just a spot to, again, if you have awards or, or things like that. Just like another, another standing area for community. Thanks. And if I can just, one thing I did want to touch on too, again, we've met with neighbors over the years, had neighborhood meetings. So you'll see on some of the more detailed plans, we do have fencing going on. We completely fence in the venue for security purposes, six-foot-high fencing, the entire, the entire complex, with all the way around. The track and field will have your typical four-foot fence around there to separate the athletes from the spectators. The fencing for the most part, all around here, would be chain link fence. Until you get to a point here and here, this section along the rear of these neighbors, we're proposing a six-foot-high stockade fence, more privacy, more screen for that. And then same thing along this property line there as well, six-foot-high stockade fence. Where we could, where we could do it, you see these green circles in here, and then you see these contours. What we're creating here is an earth berm, putting in an earth berm so we can raise up and putting some planting, some, you know, evergreen screening to help screen some of the neighbors here, expecting this could be an area of congregation of spectators and whatnot during events. And then also as we, as we cut in and get, this is probably our closest neighbor here, same thing, we create a flat area along their property line and putting in some evergreen screening there as well, trying to help mitigate some of that.
The bottom house, but the lower?
This one here?
Yeah.
Everything is higher.
On top.
Yeah, we're, we're cutting in, so you know, there probably end up being about seven to 10 feet higher. Here you are here, and then you have these people ending up much higher. Their backyards are about, we'll say 15 to 18 feet higher.
Is there a grade coming down? But is there a bank in?
Right here.
I saw a bank.
Yeah, a very steep slope here.
Yeah, it's very steep.
Very steep here. So we're trying to, we tried to get away from retaining walls and trying to return our, our slope back to grade as soon as we could to try and?
And you got to put the fence on the top of that grade?
Yes.
Okay. So you're removing or you're, you're bringing the level down?
Yeah, so it's, so.
It's pretty down now.
So we're, we're, yeah, we're cutting in to this point of reference. This is basically the edge of the existing field. So we're expanding that. And then, so this is a slope up today. So we're cutting into that, and then the return slope is, is back there. You know, so we have, then we have a big fill in this section here. So we have, we have a cut in the upper field and then a fill in kind of the middle field because this is just one big flat area essentially.
So what's the, what's the distance as far as between the, what's the buffer between the edge of that field and that back house, say?
Right in here? On Colonial, probably about 10, 10 feet or so that we're trying, we're not going to be disturbing.
Oh, that's it.
Yep. And they have, you know, existing vegetation back in there, too. So that's why I wanted to put a fence, put a stockade fence, you know, in transition from chain link to stockade to try and obscure that. And then their houses, their backyard slope up, so then their houses are probably closer to maybe 20, 25 feet higher than the fields.
So their houses are going to be almost the height of the top of the light poles?
Not quite.
They're great, but?
The poles are still, these poles, these poles are 70, these poles are 80.
They moved back into it on, you know, quite a bit.
Yeah.
What kind of, that's why I'm concerned about is lighting, is what kind of lighting bleed back are you going to have into those? Have you done that study?
Yeah, so we're working, and working with Musco. And so along the property lines, so here was actually pretty good because we could pull everything away. The worst spot is, is here, the softball lighting. As you can imagine, that's where we're going to get close to the, to the neighbors. So we have a little bit of spillage, probably extends along the property line. I believe the highest foot candle we had was about .6.
.6, okay.
.6. And that was in this spot here. Mostly it was .2 to .4. And so full moon, twilight, you can get up to one foot candle. Usually, usually nighttime is about a half a foot candle. So similar to a clear, clear night, you know, starry, full moon sky. And then you, you quickly start, as you get further away from that property line, it dissipates. And that doesn't take into account the fencing, the existing vegetation that's there either. Just assuming that there's none of that.
Okay, good. Okay. I've got a more questions, Ford.
I want to, so Anthony, obviously you didn't, you, you don't have much opposition. You don't have any opposition. You have people here in support, but would you agree that these fields would fall under Section 3 of 48, that they would be exempt?
Like the over amendment type stuff?
Yeah, it would be exempt because it's a school, because it's owned by the municipality and a school. I'm just want, I don't want to open up a can of worms, but?
I know I've, I've had some conversations with other projects where we try not to do that. But I've understood that we probably didn't even have to come to the planning board if we wanted to push that, but that wasn't, that was never a discussion we were?
Right, well, I still think you have to come before us for, to make sure you had the density requirements and the lighting and things of that nature. But I think it's exempt from zoning because it's a?
It's a non-profit educational use.
Right, owns by the municipality.
But zoning can't overregulate. But, you know, we, 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 we've had neighborhood meetings. I don't want to, you know, speak for the neighbors, but as you could imagine, they had concerns, as you would expect, you know, being a neighbor up against the school.
Yeah, well, but you did, I mean, this has been, like, at least five years, at least five years.
Yeah.
We've been talking about these fields for 20 years.
I know, five years.
So we've, we've tried to add these, these things to the plans to help mitigate impact for the owners.
Well, thank you. I'll give the audience one more shot, any other questions? Madam Ford, do you have any other questions?
I guess, so you're not looking for a waiver on the player, I guess, under control?
Why is that under control?
And if, and if you'd like to, the planning director had a very good review of the project and had some, some, some comments that I did a response to. We can go through that if you'd like.
Why don't you go through those?
And what was it you want to go through? Do you want me to just read them?
You have a good, very good letter, so I'll flip it.
So I'm just going to touch upon, there's a lot of good information there, talking about the project as a whole. And I'm just going to touch upon some of the outstanding comments the director had brought out. One was snow storage, making sure that we had snow storage in accordance with the zoning. And so we're going to add a note right to the plans that have the snow storage shown on them. But basically, our CALIC shows that we need about 3,000 square feet of snow storage by the 5% requirement, and we're providing about 15,000. So, so we have, we have plenty there. And basically, it's all around the edges, as you would expect on a small parking area, all along the edges, plenty of room to, to accommodate that. Landscaping, our plans, we had done our landscape plans. We've been consulting with AT Lard and Associates, who's always been very involved with school type things, did a lot of the parks, Barrett Park, the Mechanic Street Park and Doyle. So we've been working with them on, on some of the layouts. We stamped the landscape plans ourselves, and the zoning mentions a requirement to have landscape plans stamped by a landscape architect. But the zoning does have a provision that states that the planning board may accept the plans prepared by one other than a landscape architect, that it believes the plan meets the design guidelines noted below and in concert with the intent of this regulation. So we would ask that the board accept the plans that we had submitted for that. There's a requirement in the site for interview about providing plans that shows all the property boundaries and ownership within street. The size of this plan is very difficult to do that. So we'd asked, I created a GIS accessories map and submitted that and asking the board to accept that as part of it, as it allows the board to do that in the site plan regulations. There was a comment about garbage dumpsters, and if any dumpsters were going to be proposed, you know, as part of the concession stand activity up in there. And there is no intent to provide a dumpster up in here, that existing dumpsters in the rear of the school. And as you see in, in many school complexes and even at Doyle, what the intent would be is to stage trash barrels in and around the venue, and then you pick them up, a gator, golf cart, or pickup truck, and then go dump them, which is similar to what, to what Doyle does. So we're not providing an extra dumpster for the concession stand. There was a comment regarding light, there was a comment about in the zoning, the site plan talks about making sure you have a one-foot candle minimum in your, your driveway and parking areas. We've worked with Shepherd Electrical Engineering to develop the lighting for the driveway and the parking areas. We submitted their photometric plans to show that we have one-foot candle minimum throughout that and that there's no spillage from that to the abutting properties. But then I, what I alluded to more in my letter is the discussion on the light poles for the stadium lighting. And again, using directional shielded fixtures to try and minimize the light spilling, but it's, if I'm honest, it's on 100%. There is, there is some spillage along this property line here and just a tad bit there. And so that's where I'm not sure if a special consideration is, is needed or not on that. The zoning, sexual pertinent to that, state that you're not supposed to have any lighting or glare between 10:00 PM and dawn and to, to minimize that. It doesn't say you can't have it, it just says to minimize that. So we feel as though we've done that, but if, if a special consideration is warranted, then we would ask for that special consideration in this case, if that's applicable.
10:00 PM days at high schools.
Yeah.
Like 10:00.
So if a special consideration is, is required, then we would, we would ask for that in this, in this case. And then the last comments was question was in regard to signs, space signs was proposed. Nothing at this time for a major venue sign that's been worked out. The expectation is to have informational directional signs. Again, something probably similar to Doyle, like you can't do this, this, and this on the field, or this way to this venue, this way to that venue. We don't know exactly where those will be yet, but that'll probably work out once you kind of get, once the field is replaced, you can kind of see where you need some information sign. At this time, no, no major sign.
Scoreboard?
Yep, scoreboards are showing on there. Great question. Sorry, I thought they were bringing that one up. We have a scoreboard.
Right there.
Right, right here, right where that ADA accessibility area is. And the scoreboard was in this area of the field. I believe, please correct me if I missed anything.
You were thorough. Yep. You did good job.
Okay, we got it all?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have to close the hearing?
Okay, I have a motion.
Second?
Do you have a second? Do I have a second? That's to close the hearing. I'll call for the vote. All favor say aye. All opposed say no. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
6:35, Public Carrying for a special permit for wireless communication facility application of 40 Menus Town Avenue, map 393, Plaza One. Map three ninety-three, parcel one. Do I have a representative for that?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chair members, we're currently here, I have plans here, can we stop there or can I do it right here?
I don't know, over there is better because then the camera can pick it up.
All right.
We'll give you a few minutes, so.
So, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Carl Mier and on behalf of Verizon Wireless. And I'm joined this evening by Mark Corente, real estate appraiser, Greg Richard, Real Estate Department of Verizon. Mark, Don Hayes, certified health physicist, somewhere he's out of the hall. And Keith Valente is our RF radio frequencyer, the RF engineer. And I mentioned those folks because it's been a joint effort, a team up that put this binder together with all that information. So I'm gonna run the presentation, I'm gonna answer, try to answer a bunch of questions. But if there's something more in depth and you wanna get one of the experts there available. Before we get into that, I wanna just start and set the tone. We're talking about a cell tower, a lot of people freak out when they see those. I wanna set the tone and give you a little bit different perspective on what it is we're here to talk about tonight. This is a little model I made of a, of a model pole, like what we're proposing, this is just a desk pen. It took me a long time to find one that is a simple.
Is that a scale?
No, but, you know, most of them have like two pens and a clock and a plaque. It took me forever to find just a simple one, right, now I spray painted it gray. And, and they have this array on top. So basically, you know, when people, when you hear wireless and cell phones, people think all this horrible things, it's all complicated and everything. Yeah, the science and the engineering that allows you to have this little device you could hold in your pocket and communicate with the world, that's pretty complicated. But that has nothing to do with what we're here for tonight. The planning and zoning and real estate development aspects of this are really simple. This is more simple than building a single-family home. The site plan for this is less complicated than stuff that you guys do on a daily basis. And basically, this is a model of what it is. Basically, there's a big foundation, it's basically a counterweight, like this, this, this weight is here. So you don't see that, it's below ground, big block of concrete that acts as a counterweight for this pole that's bolted to it. And then they put the pole on, put the itinerary on top, then there's equipment at the bottom. There's no building, no shelter, we're gonna have some outdoor cabinets, there's no generator, it's really simple. There's no water, no sewer, no occupancy here. It's basically the modern day version of a telephone pole, so wireless telephone pole. It's like we're putting a Wi-Fi router in the neighborhood or something, that's all it is, it's just a pole that holds up antennas. And it's less complicated to build one of these and it creates less disturbance to the ground and the environment than building a single-family home. When you think about a single-family home, it's water and sewer and a driveway and yard and patio and garden area and everything and much bigger cell hole. This is basically a little tiny cell hole for that foundation, a gravel area is put down over geotechnical fabric so water can infiltrate back into the groundwater. Equipment on that and then, and then the pole, the fence around it, it's very unhealthy. So I just wanted to, and I, again, I, I do that not to belittle or minimize anyone's concerns, anyone who may have concerns about this. It's not a lot, I'm not trying to belittle or make, or downplay that, it's just really, it's a different perspective. This is for real estate from a planning perspective and site plan review and what we're doing here. We just wanna build a tall pole, put our antennas up to broadcast to the neighborhood. And so that's a different way of looking at it. This is not an evil thing, this is a good thing, this is the infrastructure we're providing to the city of Leamster, to this neighborhood at no cost to the city. And so what I wanna do, I found it's helpful, if I, I wanna go through quickly the contents of the application, there's a lot of material there. And by doing so, I found that I can sometimes answer some of your questions in advance and also indicate why I've provided some of this information that I have. So the table of contents is there as you see. And then the second page of the cover sheet also has a table of contents reiterated. Under tab one is our application form, so it's basically a special permit for a wireless facility. And then number two is where I went through your ordinance and addressed all the various elements of your wireless ordinance. Also the sections for special permits separately from the wireless section. Because in addition, you know, we're asked for a wireless special permit, but it's also just a regular special permit. So all those criteria are well, under section twenty-two thirteen, I, I enumerated those and went through line by line. I'm not gonna read them to you, but I can come back and give you a touch on those. I also went through just a rough overview on how we select sites, you know, we don't just come out and drive a stake in the ground, that's where we wanna be. There's science behind it, long before I get involved, this has been going on for years. With first of all, the RF folks recognizing we got a problem in that neighborhood, there's dropped calls, there's insufficient coverage and so forth. A lot of that comes through customer complaints and, and, and folks like you, like you're driving around, I'm gonna just have to jump to another carrier if you guys don't fix that problem we got over there in that section of Leamster or anything. That, that kind of information does get back to the carriers and does have validity because here we are tonight, we, we need this site, Leamster. There's another, there's a misconception of the wireless folks, they're these big deep-pocket entities that throw money around. You know, we're business like anyone else, we have a finite amount of money in the budget every year to spend to build sites. We have to be very diligent and careful about where that money's spent. Well, Leamster was chosen, we got a problem in Leamster, let's go take care of it, that's what we're here for tonight. There's a serious coverage problem, there's a capacity problem there. So that overview on the site analysis or the alternate site analysis, sort of how we arrived at sites. And then under number three is a letter of authorization from our landlord. We have a leasehold interest in a portion of the subject property for a little tiny posted stamp square of leasing this little area over here in the parking lot where we tend to put the pole and the right to get to it. But other than that, it's owned and fee by a country club, we're simply tenants on board there. Under number four, I always put in as a matter of routine, the field card tax map and D the subject property so you can fairly analyze yourself with that. Under numbers five is Mr. Valente's RF report, radio frequency report. And that goes into describing, you know, where, why we need the site, where it's covering and so forth. But I think one thing I wanna point out that's interesting is that on page six, he has this whole chart, it's page six on page six. A whole chart of all the surrounding sites, not, not all of those, that's a much more extensive list than what's actually connecting to this subject. But that's to give you an idea what's going on in the surrounding area. And if you take out the rooftops and smokestacks, you just total up the heights of the towers. And again, these are centerline Montana, centerline antenna heights that we're showing here. The average of all those is a hundred and thirty-three feet on average, which tells me all those towers are probably on average over a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty feet, something like that. And indeed, much of, many are much taller. We're only proposing a hundred and ten feet, so this is a low tower by standards, you know, by, I mean, I, I used to prefer, you know, a hundred and ninety footers, a hundred and fifty footers all over the place. So a hundred and ten footer, that's a low tower by most standards, but this is all we need, we're not being greedy. Even though your bylaw, your ordinance allows for greater height, we're, we're stopping at what we need. We are doing this for ourselves, where we will build a pole that can also be able to, structurally suitable to accommodate other carriers. But we're not like these tower companies that are trying to build a vertical real estate deal and wanna put a hundred and ninety footer up there with no one in sight and then hope people will come when it's filled. There's a lot of that that goes on and it's very useful for our industry, we go on poles like that. But that's not what we're doing here, we represent the carrier, this is a need for us, we only need a hundred and ten feet, so then we're stopping there. Under number seven is the report of Don Hayes. Now, Mr. Hayes is a certified health physicist, as the board may be aware, I know we've lost him, he had a wireless petition. But under federal law, the, the town, the city, you can't really get into the discussion of the environmental effects of radio frequency emissions to the extent that we comply with federal law. However, neighbors, members of the public, board members themselves sometimes have questions, what do you mean we're not allowed to talk about that? It's annoying that the federal law said you can't talk about that, well, I wanna know about that. So what we have done is hired a consultant to analyze the situation with the question, will this be compliant with federal guidelines? Yes or no for radio frequency emissions? And Mr. Hayes concludes, yes, it will be compliant. But I think the thing that's interesting is on page eight of his report, he has those two graphs there and those two charts. And one, the top one is just Verizon only. And then the bottom one is if it were to be loaded up with other carriers, say, you know, ATT got, you know, once it got built, ATT got wind of it, or T-Mobile, they wanted to come along and it got loaded up. What would the cumulative RF emissions be versus what would the single one with Verizon? And you can see with Verizon, it's less than one and a half percent. With, with Max Down, it's less than seven. And I wanna, again, just really briefly tell you what those numbers mean. And I, and I'm gonna preface this by saying we're not waiving any of our rights or protections under federal law. Because I don't want the record to reflect that the applicant himself got into this big health discussion, that's not what I'm doing. I'm simply clarifying what those numbers mean, that the, all the scientists and health experts set a limit somewhere where RF is yes, it's dangerous. And they say, okay, here's that limit. They go ten times below that and set the limit for OSHA, for members in the, in the wireless community, industry that work around the antennas. Ten times below the health limit, thinking those guys know where to stand, those people know where to, how to behave around that, but still we're ten times below. Then they go five times below that for members of the public. And we're down here at seven percent, so we're at seven percent of two percent basically. It's basically to demonstrate it's a non-issue, it's so low power, it's a non-issue. So that report confirms that for, under federal law, that yes, we are compliant. And under number eight is a report of Mr. Corente, real estate appraiser. So we're proposing a, a new pole in the area and we're asking for a special permit respectively. One of the criteria is, you know, harmony with the neighborhood and, and will it have any deleterious impact and surrounding values and this and that. So we hired an independent appraiser, just like Mr. Hayes is an independent health physicist. We didn't ask Verizon to police themselves on RF emissions. I also went out to an outside real estate appraiser with the question, if we were to build this, will it have any deleterious impact on surrounding property values? Yes or no? And his conclusion, right on page one of his report, is in my opinion, it'll have no measurable impact. Now, that is an interesting one, because if you don't like cell towers or if there's someone in the room that's like, can't stand this thing, you can't believe that, that's counterintuitive. How can this thing not affect my value? Well, it's because the market of real estate people aren't comprised of just you. You know, there are, there are people, when you put your home on the market and it's for sale, it's shopped, it's on, it's doing what they call days on market. Some people come and look at it, kick the tires, some people may not like it because of the way it's laid out. Other people may not like it for whatever reason. Are there some that won't like the fact that there's a cell tower in your brain? Yes, but there'll be other people that could care less or that would welcome the fact that there's good service. I've actually found, you know, early on, years ago, it used to be, I'd be coming into these communities as sort of the outsider, like, what are you doing? What do we need this cell phone stuff, where there was less ubiquitous, less common, it was a luxury of, of mobile phone back in the early days. Now, pretty much everyone's got one and with home learning and homeschooling and remote and all that, it's even more important that we have this connectivity everywhere. When networks were first built out, the idea was to build on highway, major highways and then secondary roads to connect and so forth. And now, as they mature, we're trying to fill in everywhere, we're trying to fill in backyards. The reason we're putting this in people's backyards is we're trying to cover your houses, we're trying to provide coverage to residential areas. We're not just covering the highways that people pass through anymore. So you're gonna see more of these in and around residential areas, so that's why we have to specifically be there. And, and so there's a, I haven't studied this, but anecdotally, I believe that it could be shown that not having coverage in an area is a detriment to value. You know, if you have families out looking for homes, shopping, and then they go back and compare notes at the end of the day at all the places they looked at. I could see them saying, you know, that house over there and it's on Oak Street somewhere, you know, that was in a dead zone, let's not even consider that, you're right. You know, that's a consideration now, whereas it never used to be. So we're providing a good service to, not only for our customers and this infrastructure for the public safety, but for anyone in the neighborhood. We're providing a good, improved service and coverage for them, so that is a good thing. Number nine are some photo simulations. We flew a balloon and then we, and that balloon is at the height of the proposed tower, then we stand in a simulated tower. Now, I got involved with this after that they already looked at some other locations. There are, actually, let me go up here, these plans. If you're familiar with the property, there are two tax lots here. There's this big one here, the golf course, the majority of the golf person, there's this other tax lot to the north. Before I got involved, they, they were considering a site up here somewhere, our location's somewhere up here on this northern property. And apparently, when they flew the balloon, it came out pretty, it wasn't as unobtrusive as what we're proposing, it was more visible, it was kind of more out in the open. People looked at that and said, yeah, I don't think that looks so good, why don't you find someplace else? So they moved it to this other property. And then there's a provision in the ordinance of this height setback, we meet the setbacks, the zoning district setbacks, front side rear. But there's a special revision in the Leamster ordinance about a full height of a tower. If you propose a tower a hundred and ten feet, you wanna be.
It's not the, it's not the tip over, it's for ice coming off the tower. People have a misconception, they would feel that the tower is gonna tip. So that's, that's why it was put in. It was for ice and the fall, and we did a cone of, insert up to twenty or thirty mile an hour winds.
Gotcha.
So with a thirty mile an hour wind, it will throw a hunk of, twenty pound hunk of ice so many feet away from the tower. In certain directions. So it's not, we say, I think we gotta go in there and correct that, do a better definition. It's, we call it a fall zone and people have a misconception of the tower falling over. We're not worried about that, we're worried about ice coming off the tower.
Okay, well, so we, you know, when I first gave him the file, this site was over there, I thought, what about this setback? This ice, ice zone setback?
Yeah.
You know, what are you doing, we're gonna need a variance, you know, I don't wanna have to ask for a variance, especially when you have seventy acres of land, how am I gonna argue for a variance? And they said, well, you know, this is actually, and you look at the big picture, this is actually a better location. We did this specifically to make it less of true to hide over here, if you're familiar with the site, this is all trees along here. And so we're putting it along the tree line as close as we can to sort of hide the thing back over there, you know, rather than being out in the open. Yeah, it's a golf course, there's a lot of places you can put this, but no, there's not really, when you have the course obstruct, the obstruction of the course or this thing being an obstruction on the course, so we can't really just stick it anywhere. It was decided to put it off to the side specifically to help have those trees hide it. So the people that are above that will be, you know, they'll be looking through vegetation to see it. The people way over the other side, yeah, you're gonna be able to see it, but it's gonna be backdrop by trees, it's gonna, it's not gonna be out in this, in the middle. So we did that purposely and, and asked for a variance from the zoning board and they explained it that way. I made a whole section forty-eight, forty-eight, section ten argument where I believe we, we did meet the criteria, we did, we did meet it. But it was, that's the strategy reason why. So we got that variance, that's the location and the reasons to hide it over there, help that, have that vegetation sort of shield it. And those photos show that, what it might look like, and that's very accurate, that's the most accurate way you can do that is by natural.
Is that the middle of the parking lot?
It's off to the side, so basically, the, and then the last tab, everyone's got a full, a half-size full outset of plans. The large ones are here. But the, the overview is, you know, here we go, there's, you come in through the existing access drive. And then, so there's no new driveway per se, this is just to demonstrate that we have the right to travel on it to get to our little spot, which is over here in the corner. And then, if you look up close, they are going to be, it's back in the far corner, there's a garage here, it's like the groundskeeper's workshop area, you know? That, it's gonna be back there and then we're gonna take up five parking spaces. Now, Elizabeth, when I first gave him this file, I thought, oh, taking up parking, we're going to the planning board, they're gonna wonder about that. And I thought about that months ago and Elizabeth called me this morning instead it came up, so thank you for that. I did up a little calculation sheet here and we had, we enlisted a club to help us figure this out. And, and so, yeah, so basically, what we looked at there was, the zoning ordinance has four criteria for parking that fit us under Article nine, section twenty-two dash forty-six. There's recreation outdoor, there's one pace, one space per four visitors. Well, okay, how do you figure out how many visitors you have? So I talked to someone at the club, worst-case scenario, and obviously this is not ideal, but let's, let's talk worst-case scenario, you have a nine-hole golf course. You think, oh, you have groups of four out there, actually, if you have a tournament and they're trying to really jam people in it, you could potentially say have two groups of four. You have eight people on a hole at a time, in theory, right?
You can have a wedding.
Times, I'm sorry?
You can have a wedding.
And you can have a wedding. Time, so that's times nine is seventy-two divided by the four is eighteen, so we need eighteen spaces there. Then we got a private club, which needs one space per ten seats. There's two hundred seats, divide that by ten, we need another twenty there. And there's a restaurant, you need one space for a hundred square feet of gross floor area. So we had the floor area inside, plus I gotta add up the wood deck outside, because that's dining area when it's nice weather. Divide that by a hundred, we come up with there are nineteen spaces and then you got the REITs, the pro shop, retail. I mean, that's kind of a stretch in sense that it's really not what you consider retail, but let's be worst-case scenario and throw that in there. We need another four, so you total those up, recreation, private club, restaurant, retail, you total sixty-one spots. There's a current paved and striped area out there, a hundred and thirteen spots. And we're taking away five, that leaves a hundred and eight, that's way more than is needed. Plus, if it were to come down to that, I mean, we're not even close to having, there'd be a problem, but just to hear a familiar situation out there. You know, I know that there's a, oh, I don't know, you don't wanna have like, you don't wanna have enough parking, so people start infiltrating the neighborhood and parking on side streets. That's never gonna happen. That's never gonna happen out there, I don't think it's ever happened, because think about how you'd get in there. You go in this long driveway to get back there and then there's none of the parking. Okay, park on the grass over there behind the garage, you know, they make room for you, they somehow figure it out. It's not like it's ever gonna be a problem or people are gonna be going out and infiltrating the neighborhood, even if there was a golf tournament and a wedding and, and everyone was hungry that day wanting to go to the restaurant, it's not a problem. So we're taking up five spaces way back in the corner there, tuck this thing out of the way for ice, you know? And, and it still meets the parking requirements, we're not violating anything on the, in the approval, prior approval of site plans and so forth. And so that, that fits in real nice, nice and neat right there. And then on the, Elizabeth had sent me a memo, I'm sorry, maybe the comments, when she had gone through the plans. And I just wanna briefly touch on these.
Are you talking about the November fourth memo?
Yeah, was everyone copied on my response to that?
Yes.
Okay.
It's been hacked yet.
Okay, so I don't know if I need to read this to you, but I just wanna touch on, you know, co-location. There are no other towers around, I mean, you guys know this city better than I do, there aren't any cell towers around there. If there were, we'd be on it, we don't wanna have to build this thing, this is more of an inconvenience and more expense for us. So we always look for existing towers or tall buildings first, there aren't any one hundred and ten foot buildings out there. Therefore, we are resorting to building a tower. The camouflage, yeah, we're not proposing one of those fake trees. We do have to have a light on top because of the Fishbury Airport, you know, they added that new runway. If it was the old runway, we wouldn't have a problem, the new runway, now we have a problem. So we do have to have a light and because of that, we can't have any vegetation up there obstructing that. The light, of course, is aimed up to the pilots, not to the ground, it's still the tree thing when works. That's why, again, why we stuck it over here, well, let's stick it in as close to the trees as we can, let's get it off to the side. Visual simulations, you know, so there's a, the board has the right, if they want, to ask for another balloon float. I'm respectfully asking that you don't or you don't, you shouldn't need to, because we've already done that once and those photos are pretty clear, it is what it is. Another balloon float will just show you the same thing. It's very difficult, you have to pick up, you have to have a flat calm day. These times when you have to advertise it, there's some ordinances, you know, where you gotta advertise so many days in advance or anything. That hardly ever works out because then it's a rainy day or a windy day. We, when I do these private ones, we are on the phone with the engineers and say, call me when you know it's a really flat calm morning, we'll just go out there and do this thing. You know, that's how last minute sometimes has to be with the way the weather is. So we believe we provide good representations. Yeah, our emissions, you know, the board has the right under the ordinance to hire consultants to figure all this out. I don't think this is very complicated, yeah, this isn't, twenty years ago, it was all new to everyone. We provided that report by Dr. Hayes, or Dr. Mr. Hayes, that it's a non-issue, it's so below the limits, that's a non-issue. And so we don't think you need a consultant to explain that to you all, you have the right to. Performance guarantee, now, there are provisions for asking for a removal bond or whatever. We're on completely private property, so this is not anywhere on public property. We have a contractual obligation with our landlord to remove our trade fixtures upon termination of tenancy. We already have contractual obligations to do that, which will their honor. We also believe that you'll never have to worry about this thing coming down in our lifetimes. It used to be years ago, there was a thought, well, okay, satellites are going to replace, place these wireless poles, you know? And then these, these towers are gonna come down in years to come, that, that's never come about, we're building more sites. We need, there's a densification in the network going on, where we need more sites closer together, not fewer. So I doubt that you're ever gonna see this thing coming down, but if it were to need to come down, it would be a contractual obligation for us with our landlord to remove it, so we respectfully ask that.
Do we have a copy of that contract?
Well, no, it's private, it's a private deal.
Private, okay.
And then the annual certifications, now this is language that I've seen, because this is all I do for a living, this wireless stuff, so I see this all over the world, some of this language, it's almost like these bylaw consultants, you know, reurgitate their verbiage all over. So a lot of this annual certification thing, annual certification of the FCC, well, we are a wireless carrier. If we don't, when we lose our carrier, we're out of business, so we don't need to annually recertify that to you guys. We're, you know, we're good to go there. The FAA is the same thing, we ran the FAA report and it said, you gotta light that thing, you can only go X height and you gotta light it. That doesn't change either unless we change something with the tower, so that doesn't need to be recertified every year. And then as far as building compliance, building code compliance, we don't believe that needs to be either. Once it's built, it's gonna be built per today's code, it's gonna be, we're gonna submit a building code application, whatever the construction control affidavit, structural, whatever the building commissioner wants. Once it's built, as long as nothing changes, there's no need to recertify that. If another carrier comes along and wants to co-locate on it, at that point, a structural would be run to confirm, yes, it's strong enough to hold you guys or not, or you need to do something. But to recertify every year, in my opinion and in our opinion, is unnecessary and we respectfully ask to be waived for having to provide that paperwork. And, and then along those lines, I tie in waivers. Elizabeth asked that I sort of spell out, and Elizabeth, were these waiver requests also distributed?
Um, yes, yes.
Okay, so in my narrative.
If you give it to us in PDF form, I've gotten to the political part.
Yeah, so basically in my narrative, in my section two of my narrative, I went through and everyone, so I say not applicable or we respect for the way that Elizabeth suggested, we just stick that all in one spot, you know, like waiver documents. So basically, there's nothing new here, it's just reiterating that, you know, we've already provided these photos, so I don't think we need to provide more, you know, do another balloon float. The insurance, so this, this thing about asking insurance and a reasonable amount of term by the special mortgage granting authority, blah, blah, blah. We're, we're a private entity on private property, the city of Leamster has no insurable interest. I don't know if there's insurance people here on the board, but you can't get insurance of something you have no interest in, you know? So the city has no interest in our project, so we respectfully ask that they don't come to us for certificates of insurance. I mean, the club can, because they're a landlord, the city has nothing to do with that. So we're on private property, the city has no insurable interest, we ask to waive that. Same with the bond that I already went into and, and the annual certification. So I basically just reiterated those in sort of a separate format. And, and that is the, that is the gist of it, it's very simple, it's just a pole off in the corner over here. And, oh, the other thing, there was a comment from the conservation commission, maybe there's wetlands nearby, yeah, we saw that. When I did my site, I noticed this drops off down here. And this is the neighbor's property and it gets wet down in there. We just checked out to confirm we are greater than one hundred feet away so that there, it's not jurisdictional to the conservation commission. So that, those wetlands are far enough away out of the neighbor's properties, it has nothing to do with us. If you're familiar with the site, you go up, it's high and dry and paved and developed, it's already cleared and ready to go. It's a very easy site from construction, the constructability, because you can drive right up to it and there it is. But there's no wetlands issues, no environmental issues. There's another consultant that works the NEPA process that I think you folks had some interaction with, where they sent out a letter. So they check for endangered species and Indian burial grounds and all that and under federal law, we have to do that, we have to, you know, normal real estate developers don't typically get involved in that, but we as federal licensees have a deal with the FCC that even though, you know, a lot of that stuff doesn't really apply, what does that have to do here? We have this agreement that yes, we're gonna go the extra step and do this whole federal NEPA process. So there's another group that's doing that, that's run concurrently and as of right now, I don't know if it's done now, but I've been in touch with them and they haven't found anything, any red flags, I mean, it looks like. But I know they sent a notice out to the city at one point, which they have to do by law, saying, hey, we're, we're doing this investigation, you have thirty days to comment, I think you guys might have gotten one of those letters back in the spring and wondered what's going on with this tower. That was just simply the NEPA guy doing, the NEPA people doing their thing. I'm the planning and zoning guy now here with the real deal for y'all, so, so that, that's separate. But it's a very simple project, it's just a pole. We respectfully ask for your approval so we can get this thing on air and service the neighborhood. I think it's a good thing, it's not gonna cost the taxpayers a dime and there's no use of public services. We're not gonna put anyone in the school system, we don't need any police or fire protection, there's nothing, there's no drain on the public, but we're given to the, to the city, so I think it's a good thing.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I'll open to the audience for a second. Okay, I'll open it up to the audience, do I have any questions or comments?
Paul Garabix, I live at one oh six Flagler Road, I've been on the Flagler Road Day Street for thirty-eight years and to me, this would be a great thing, because my cellphone service there is non-existent. I lose calls, I can't make calls unless I can go somewhere outside, so I'm all for that.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Keegan Manchester, I live out in sixty-one Sawyer Way. I had requested the packet from Elizabeth and, you know, I appreciate all the work going into this. You know, I don't have a problem with cell service, I have Wi-Fi in my house and, you know, if you look at photo five B, that was taken of my next door neighbor's house. If you look at a view of Google Maps, I mean, my property is definitely the closest house. And I, I have concerns about this, you know, I'm sitting at my island this morning and I would be looking at the top of this tower, I just, you know, I don't have a lot of quest, I mean, I do have some questions. I mean, I read the document, it's 4G, I understand that's a little less than the 5G frequency and whatnot, but I just, I have concerns as, you know, I have young kids, our neighborhood's full of young kids. You know, not many people were aware of it, we have, you know, some elderly people, we've got some people that are, you know, spend a lot of time out of the country. I think we, you know, those of us on our street are not in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have anyone else that wish to comment?
I have a comment.
Yes, ma'am?
Or a question, I should say, my name is Erin Rovetti, I live at sixty-six Sawyer Way, right next door. My question is, you said, mentioned about how people can piggyback off of your tower, say AT&amp;T. Who has the approval on who gets to piggyback off your tower? Is it Verizon, is it, you know, a collective question? Right, so it, but who has the say so on it, Verizon? So they give the okay on who can, so right now it's, it's starting off on a smaller scale, but it could potentially grow to a larger scale.
It can't getting taller.
It can't get taller, but the frequency can get stronger, is that correct?
No, the frequent, no.
You're asking if they have the right to add antennas.
They're gonna add, right, like you had mentioned, AT&amp;T, Comcast can collectively use your tower. I don't know how it all works, so I'm asking, do they add different visibility extensions onto this tower? Is there a higher frequency, is it, is there gonna be more radiation coming off of this tower? That's kind of my question, if that makes sense.
Should I answer?
Yeah, you're gonna answer that.
Yeah, so the, we're building a, we're starting out with just us at the top, but we're building a pole that will be suitable structurally to accommodate others. And.
How about?
Uh, four, three, four, I mean, there's only three or four in the market now. And so that report, that Mr. Hayes' report, the two charts, one is Verizon only, which was at one, one, one and a half percent, and then all the carriers loaded up. So Mr. Hayes, how many was that on there, all loaded up, four carriers? Or three? Four total, is it seven percent, seven percent of two percent? That's how, the limit for the public is two percent of the, of the health limit and we're seven percent of that, it's like a non-issue. The Wi-Fi in your house gives off more RF than, or your own mobile phone you keep on your pod gives off more RF than that thing a couple hundred feet away. And as far as being able to see it, I'm sorry, and I can't, I, I respect, if you say it looks ugly, I'm not gonna argue with you because that's personal taste and I'd be a horrible person to try to get into discussion about that. Everyone has a right to their own opinion, beauty is in the eye of the holder. So if you think that's ugly, it's like, okay, I'm with you, but if you say, oh, I'm never gonna be able to sell my house again, well, now let's have a discussion, because that's not true. So yes, you, some people will be able to see this, and that's true of anytime you build anything, even a new single family home next door. All of a sudden, no, it used to be an empty lot, now there's this house there, which can sometimes be more annoying. You know, depending on who moves in, they leave the garage, the spotlight over the garage on all night, they got a dog barking or whatever. This is a pole, it's an inanimate object that sits out there and nothing happens other than your phone, you know, you notice your phone works better. So yes, you, some people will be able to see it, yes, they may not be happy, I, I'm sorry for that, I can't do anything about that. But the purpose of this planning and zoning process is that this is a piece of infrastructure we're proposing to the neighborhood. This section of Leamster is good for everybody, and yeah, a couple of people might see it here and there. I, I like the look of the tower, I, people have asked me, would you want one of those in your backyard? And I say, absolutely, I live in this little tiny village lot, I don't have room, and I'd love to have one, I'd have it right on picture or right on my business card to prove that I'm not a hitman, Chris.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Bert Hushold, three thirty-six Pier Street, two questions. The percentage, if you keep raringly watching the numbers, of the hundred percent maximum limit, this tower is emitting what percent?
Is what?
You said there's a hundred percent maximum limit and ten percent for working, what are the other percentages? Just of a hundred percent, what percent is this tower?
It's, so go two percent of a hundred percent is the limit for members of the public and we're seven percent of that, so I can't do the math that quickly in my head, but seven percent of two percent.
Okay, so we, all right. Uh, the second question.
Point six.
What's that?
About point five to six.
What's your name, sir? Bert Hushold?
Usher.
Hushold?
Okay.
Yeah, and the, how does this tower you're proposing compare to the tower that's already right near Apple Country Farm or whatever this is?
I think that's just for the air, that might be for the airport.
Yeah, that's just the airport.
Just away.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it's at the top of the hill.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Um, another question, Keegan Manchester, sixty-one Sawyer Way, what if Manousnak sells that property?
There's been talks about that.
Yeah, we have a recorded notice, we have a release, so our right of title would come before someone sells, so they would inherit us.
I see, okay.
So you'd have to remove it?
No.
No.
We hope, we just pay somebody else the rent.
I got you.
Yeah, it would go with.
With whoever.
It would become a benefit to the property because of the rent that they receive, okay? I don't think that's in the, I don't think that's a, that's a whole future, but we hope it's not.
Yeah, you never know, you never know.
I mean, that's how they built our street, so.
Well, it's, yeah, there used to be Manousnak property, like that. Yes?
Ralph Polteny, thirty-six Burge Out, now the proposed site here for that, is there any chance that that would change? I mean, that's, that's the site, that's it.
That's what we're asking, we're asking for this court to approve that, so.
That's it, yeah.
If there was any change in the site or location would happen now, okay, once we approve it, that is the approved location. Any other changes to that location would have to go through this whole process again and come to the planning board, okay? So, I mean, if, let's say the, for some reason, the planning board requested it to be moved fifty feet to the left at the moment, and just run it over, okay, then that would be the location. The property gets old and something happened in, in ten years and they wanted to move it, then they would have to go back through the process, okay?
One more quick question, sorry, were you all done today? Were you all done today?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Erin Rovetti, again, sixty-six Sawyer Way, just didn't know if there was any noise that comes off of the tower, anything that runs as far as that goes, any extra, like humming or?
No, there's, we're gonna have outdoor cabinets that you won't notice when you get so many feet away and we do, we are not proposing a generator, that would be the only thing that would possibly make, we're not proposing one here. It's just an inanimate object, piece of modern art sculpture.
What's the height of it again?
One ten.
One ten.
All right, under our ordinance, it was, well, sorry, I'm reading the wrong section.
You can go up to one ninety, I believe, under your ordinance.
I have it written down in my report.
Throw us when we have a notice for one sixty-eight.
Up to one ninety, yeah?
Okay.
Yep, one ninety, that's correct.
So this is where, you know, we're, we're coming in at one ten, that's what we need, we're not getting greedy and we're not asking.
Would a high in tower give you much more coverage or is it because of the topography?
It's, you know, so it's, it's because of what they're trying to do, they're trying to cover a very specific problem and sometimes if you're too high, that can overshadow into the neighbor's cell and screw things up. So no, there's, these engineers figured this all out very precisely and this is what we need.
No, because I was looking at the coverages and I can see the coverages, I'm outside the coverages, I need coverage.
It's one site at a time, so this, yeah, this is going on all over the country, you know, I do this and there's other people like me, one site at a time, we're filling out the, filling the holes, filling out the network, one site at a time, trying to cover your backyards.
Okay.
Why does, why does, why do you need a variance from the CBA?
We went there for that setback, the ice, icefall setback.
I made a copy of it.
Well, they think it's top level, but, yeah.
But it looks like there's no, there's no neighboring structures, I mean, the, the golf course has a shed there. No, it's a perfect spot, yeah.
Yeah, but it's a little parking, hide it with the tree.
I'm sorry.
It's a little parking.
It's not in the middle, it's off to the side.
It's off to the side of the park.
Far corner. Our corner.
So if people parked all around it, and then went there, and the ice fell off.
I've never, I mean, I, I see you must have read a study or something, I personally have never heard of that, you know, ice flying off way outside, usually, you know, gravity drives it down, yes, a wind can take it out.
Well, when, with, that, this was done probably when we first wrote the ordinance, and I can't remember all of the details, but at that point, somebody came up with a study, it was a study done somewhere, that said that in the northeast area, there had been some damage from ice, okay? And ice and a combination of ice and wind, so that they would break off, and it's, and they had a cone, I can remember.
Yeah.
A cone of affected area, and, uh, okay, you know, and that was.
I don't wanna park underneath it, thanks for the.
No, you don't wanna park underneath it, you know.
But you already.
But, but I also, I'll be honest with you, at this, um, I rather doubt that anybody's gonna be out there playing golf when we have an ice storm.
Right, or, yeah, yeah.
You know, I, I got a few of the golfers that are here, I think they're, they're not enough to do it, but, you know.
But it won't fall on the neighbors.
But it's not gonna fall on the neighbors.
It's not gonna fall on the words, it's just gonna fall on the shit.
Yeah. So.
One more.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not.
There's one more question, John, do you?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Manu Stark Road going up to the country club.
Right.
Can that handle the weight of construction vehicles that may be required to, because there's thirty-six inch pipe that comes right down through from the wetlands up there, down through my property.
I mean, I don't know how big of equipment you're gonna require.
Yeah, it's, we'll, I mean, I'm gonna make a note, have construction look at that, we will, there's nothing heavy duty about this, it's a concrete truck. You know, like you go, you're pouring a foundation for a single family home, safety, but we'll look at that.
Yeah, good point.
It's only private vehicles that go up there, but.
Yeah, mostly, but, yeah, I know the call that you're talking about, the, the vet problem.
That's another situation.
Wasn't there, uh, something that came before the board just recently about that? There's some water issue.
There may have been conservation.
There is conservation, yeah.
They had to replace that plate.
Yeah, because they had dead issues with the pond and stuff like that, that was, but that was conservation. Okay.
All right, John, if I.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
I just wanted to, there were two department head comments that maybe you can speak to, the police department, they asked about whether you give them space under a tower for city communications, emergency communications, and so I just wanted to speak to that, and then the fire department asked, and I don't know if I understand the comment. Will the building interfere with apparatus accessibility? Related in five-twenty-seven, the CMR, chapter eighteen, whatever.
Yes, yeah, so I read that chapter, the CMR note, while I got back to it, you know, basically, it's the exact access that's there now is the same, so the fire department can get into the club, they can get into our tower, the police, I've had discussions with the representative of the police department, he, he, he represents, just the police DPW and fire, the communications guy. And we're having ongoing discussions, I've asked him some specs on what equipment they want, and, and then what height do you need, and so we're, Verizon's amenable to that, we just don't want to, you know, we, there's a couple of things, we can't stick an antenna very above the tip-top because of the FAA, or not, I don't know, we gotta talk to the FAA about that, if it's just like a whip, maybe they let us do that. And then if it's below us, well, now it might take up spot from another carrier, so we gotta see, well, how much space they need and all that, what size of their whip, so we're amenable to that, but talking to them about it, so, yeah.
Okay, so. Okay, good, good point, Paul. Do I have any other questions or comments? Now, let me ask one more time, do I have any more questions or comments from the audience? Uh, board members. Did I ask, yes, sir.
Uh, Steve Chusa, forty-six, part of the crossroad in Lemonstall, um, I just wanted to make a comment of, you know, as far as the, the cell. I personally was present at two medical emergencies that happened in the club, this, not this past year, but the year prior. So I think, you know, anything that we can do that's gonna increase cell phone coverage, make it easier to get people in there, would be a benefit for, uh, for the club in general, as well as public safety.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Uh, do I have anything else? A motion would be in order.
Motion closing.
Have a motion, but, motion made and seconded to close the hearing. All in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Motion carries. We'll discuss this later on in the meeting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
It won't be long, it won't go far.
Yeah, it won't be long. Okay, call to order.
Patrick Kerla.
Here.
Paul Weiser. Mark Carrington.
Here.
Dean Bowyer.
Here.
Jason Paray.
Here.
Salton Tony, excuse, Robert Corriesso. John Susan.
Yeah. Minutes of previous meetings, October eighteenth, twenty-twenty-one.
I make a motion to accept as written, what?
Have a motion made and seconded to accept as written, do I have any additions, deletions, or corrections? Here now, I'll call for the vote, all in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion carries. November first, twenty-twenty-one.
Make a motion to accept as written, what? Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept as written, do I have any additions, deletions, or corrections? Here now, I'll call for the vote, all in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion carries. Three-point-O, NR from one-forty Lincoln Street, map five-sixty-three, parcel fifteen. You just follow what you're doing, yeah?
Yep.
So, Brian, my associate here, Macadi, engineer, here on behalf of Sean Colet and DVC Development, for, uh, to subdivide the property at one-forty Lincoln Street. It's a three-point-three-five acre parcel, there's an existing residence on it now, we're proposing to subdivide it through the NR process into three lots, so the existing house you see is on a zoning compliant lot, needs the minimum frontage requirements. The zone is, uh, we created one additional lot to the left side of the house that exceeds the minimum half-acre requirement. There's ninety-plus feet of frontage on it, meets the hundred feet through the house requirement toward the back of the parcel. And then the third parcel that's created is a little over two-point-three acres that also has frontage, all three lots have frontage on Lincoln Street, that meet the minimum frontage requirements. You notice there's an odd little parcel of land, a wildflower, that's owned by somebody else, so they don't have any frontage here, yeah. So that's why. This is all, so there's two-point-two-five acres.
So they don't have any, the frontages on, uh.
All frontages are all.
Yeah.
It's gonna get this later on down the road.
Sure, the soul is a tax bill.
Oh.
Yeah, you can see in the wall up here. So that's the three-plus acres we're able to, to get two additional lots out of.
It looks like somebody screwed up so.
Yeah.
We have to have a hundred feet with houses, right?
This, this was basically.
Yeah, well, your house would be here.
Yeah, so.
Coming off of.
So what, when you set the house, would you set that?
I just wanna see the eighty feet in the lot two, you have seventy-eight point seven-one, I must not be. Right?
What's that number?
Lot two, how many?
Lot two has a hundred and eleven point two-three feet.
Yeah, the, the frontage, that's seventy-eight plus thirty.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, that's what I was looking for.
So every one of them, this one has ninety-two feet, this one has a hundred and one, two-hundred-and-one feet.
Okay, and that's eighty, okay, I need to endorse.
Have a motion made and seconded to undo this, do I have any discussion? Here now, I'll call for the vote, all in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion carries. Go business. Now, new business, site plan application for one-twenty-two Granite Street, that one-two-six parcel on Lemus High School Athletic Field. Okay. What's your wish?
I make a motion to, uh, accept the site plan application along with the waiver of, uh, what are the, the landscape.
Done landscaping.
You have to do the waiver separate.
Waivers are done separately, sorry.
They should be done first.
First, we will do the waivers first, and then we accept.
Oh, second, well, we're gonna make a motion to, uh, for the waiver and landscaping, okay.
Was that the only waiver, question?
I don't know, we can.
Nancy, was that the only waiver?
Elizabeth, was that the?
Um, there's a landscaping, we met the requirement for the three hundred feet, um, because they provided that, um, let me just.
Is there a second waiver for the lighting?
So.
Is it out, lighting was okay?
The lighting. It demonstrated that.
Lighting, isn't that actually.
Andrea, what was it?
It's not even actually a waiver necessarily, the zoning gives the planning board the authority.
Right.
But we usually.
To accept the plan, so whatever you usually do, but.
Right.
You can accept the plan as is or grant a waiver, the zoning says, the planning board may accept the plan prepared by others on landscape architect, planes to market, if you believe the plan meets the design guidelines, so you have that authority, you don't have to grant a waiver, but anyway. So that one, and then the discussion on the lighting, it was, I guess it depends on how you interpret the regulations, if we completely meet them or not, um, it doesn't say you can't have lights village across property lines, it says you need to, to minimize.
Minimize, yeah.
And I, I think we've done that.
I know it's very.
They're very faring away from the house.
You know, but if you wanna be safe.
Yeah, I see most of that, and, and like I said, we can put, like I said, we gotta, we can put a ten o'clock or something on that, too, you know.
Yeah, I mean, so to, to be safe, I guess I could ask for a waiver, um, from the lighting, I know, I believe in the zoning, there may be light pole height standards.
In some time.
Which we exceed that, um, for sure. That, that's where it gets back into, I think, like Carol was, was bringing up the, I, I think if we're not gonna go that route, then we should probably grant the waivers that we find that we need to grant. And not convolute both things.
Right. Take the separate waivers and take the.
Yep.
So, the first one would be, the first waiver would be to accept the, uh, uh, the property, okay, under variance allowed by the planning board, okay, as acceptable.
And is that, all this already?
I, I don't understand.
No.
Is that going in the other direction with it, then?
I, how, how many waivers yet, you're asking for the, the lights.
The, the landscape.
The landscape, I mean.
Landscape.
And then just, just anything associated with lighting, whatever applicable standards for that, which would be.
So landscaping is section twenty-two dash sixty-two point three point one. And lighting is section twenty-two dash fifty-eight point six.
And act, and act, and section sixty-two point two.
Sixty-two point two, yeah.
So sixty-two point two, uh, a section of that reads, on sites of budding residential properties, there must be no obtrusive lighting from ten to dawn. So, to, I think to get away from the opinion on obtrusive lighting, we could ask for that waiver, that.
Okay. So that's sixty-two point two?
Six-two point two point two, correct. And that's under six-two point two, which is the general outdoor lighting, uh.
Right. So the first waiver would be on sixty-two point two point two waiver on lighting, on obtrusive. Uh, I didn't entertain that motion, do I have something to make that motion?
I propose that, uh, we accept the waiver, uh, for sixty-two point two point two. For obtrusive lighting.
For the. I have a motion made, do I, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion made and seconded, all in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion carries.
And then if I, if I can, Mr. Chairman, um, and this is again, it's one of those interpretations, whether it applies or not, in your site plan review, um, regulations, you have an additional section that talks about additional site plan standards for business, commercial, multi-use, and overlay districts. So you, one could argue that this is not any of those districts, it's in a residence A, but one could also argue it's not a residential use, so if you were to go that way, there is a section in there that says, this is sixty-three point one point three point two, that no light standard may be taller than twenty-four feet. And we have the stadium lining of seventy and eighty, so.
Sixty-three one three two.
Sixty-three point one point three point two.
Sixty-three point one point three point two.
Yeah.
Okay, that's on.
What do you wanna look at?
That's on height?
Yes, that's the pole height, it can be no, no taller than twenty-four feet.
Proposably.
Right, well.
If it's applicable.
I don't think it applies.
So that's, okay.
Yeah.
This is under first business C.
Because it, the, yeah, and the first line, the first line, we had that in front of you, Carol, the first line of that section, to receive site plan approval, all multifamily residential in all non-residential projects or uses must demonstrate compli, compliance with the following standards. So that statement then kind of makes it sound like if you're not residential, you have to meet it, period.
Okay.
So that's where it gets, it's a little, um.
I still think it only applies to business, business C, multi-use and overlay districts, but.
Yeah, I would, I would tend to agree, but it's, if someone were to.
It would, let's put, we'll hear the waiver, and then we'll cover it, they won't have a problem.
All right, I, I say we accept the waiver for sixty-three point one point three point two.
Have a motion made and seconded to accept sixty-three point one point three point two on pole height, any discussion? Here now, I'll call for the vote, all in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion carries.
Landscaping.
Landscaping.
Twenty-two dash sixty-two point three point one.
Twenty-two point.
Twenty-two dash sixty-two point three point one.
Make a motions to accept the waiver.
Have a motion made and seconded to accept a waiver on a landscaping architect. Any discussion? Here now, I'll call for the vote, all in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion carries. Uh, motion is, any other waivers? Okay, motion would be in order to accept the project with waivers.
So, all right.
So.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, motion by Dean, seconded by Carol, uh, any discussion? Here now, I'll call for the vote, all in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no, motion carries.
Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, everything.
Thank you, build that field.
Oh, build that field, how long is this gonna take?
Yeah, when are you gonna be done?
When are you gonna get the money?
That's the million dollar question.
This gentleman wants to be able to walk on it, I mean.
Yeah, that'll be at the school department, that's the.
No clean tools letting strangers on the school.
Okay. Special permit for wireless communication facility application, forty Manu Stark Avenue, map one, three-ninety-three, parcel one. Okay. Let's deal with waivers first.
Do you know that list of waivers? You, you have ordered it, they have it in their package.
Yeah, yeah. But then you have to. Build that field. Do I feel?
Where are we leaving?
Uh, I said.
So, there's a list, it's in your packet.
Elizabeth got that.
Do we not walk you through them?
Read them all.
Yeah, why don't you read, I was looking through my bag and I misplaced it.
Um. Well, you wanna look through them and make sure.
You gotta take them individually.
Okay, section eighty-five point one, the special permit granting authority has authority to hire an, a consultant over you. Any proposed wireless communications facility submission at the expense of the applicant.
But that's not a way.
They requested a waiver for that.
That's not a waiver.
It's not, we're just not gonna do it.
We're not, we're not, we're not gonna do it, we're not. We closed the hearing, so we can't do it now anyway.
So, go on to the next one?
Eighty-five point three point four. Color photographs, computer simulation, or renditions illustrating the proposed wireless communications facility with its antenna and or panels or dishes and its location. The planning board may require additional visual analysis such as one other items.
Yeah, so again.
We closed the hearing.
It's not a way.
Okay. Okay, section eighty-five point three point five, within thirty days after filing the application for any new wireless communications facilities or extensions on height thereto. If requested by the planning board, the applicant's settlement.
Yeah, no, not waiver, wait, skip that.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Let's go to one's door.
Section eighty-eight point one, insurance in a reasonable amount determined and approved by the special permit granting authority after consultation at the expense of the applicant. With one or more insurance companies must be enforced to cover the damage of the structure and other site liabilities. Annual proof of said insurance must be filed with the special permit granting authority.
So. I mean, I, I understand the applicant's argument that it's between, but, I mean, it's one of our.
Question we.
Performance, it's one of our requirements under performance guarantees. All you have to do is, if you're gonna have, I'm assuming Menusack is gonna require, we just need a copy of it filed, that's all it is.
Right.
I don't see you reading the waiver either.
No, I think, no, I think it should be done the other way.
As long as somebody does it.
Do you want to leave it up to Menusack?
I mean, it's not that, we're, we're not, we're not asking to be an additional insurer.
There would be just as fine to provide our information, but is that necessary for proof of insurance?
Yeah, we're just asking for, just like, yeah, a vehicle on the highway, we're asking for it to be insured.
Okay.
So, oh, we're not, we're looking into a certification that is insured.
All right.
Okay, you don't need this, the policy.
What's the next one?
All we need is a certification that is insured for a certain amount and, and liability for that tower.
Okay.
All right, section eighty-eight point two, an initial bond must be posted for the annual maintenance for any access road site. A wireless communications facility in any amount approved by the, in an amount approved by the special permit granting authority.
It's not quite, it's in the parking lot, the access for this thing, yeah.
Okay, section eighty-eight point three, the special permit granting authority may require an additional performance guarantee to ensure that facilities that have not been used for one year are removed.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's on their property, so if they're gonna have an agreement with the.
So they request a waiver on that.
Right.
All right, so, so we want to waive that.
That would have to be waived.
So I make a motion to waive the eighty-eight point, let's start with eighty-eight point two.
Second.
Eighty-eight point three.
Well, eight, wait, 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 eighty-eight point two.
Eighty-eight point two, I have a motion to waive eighty-eight point two.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Here no call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries.
Make a motion to waive eighty-eight point three, accept the waiver request.
Sorry, ma'am.
A motion made and second to waive eighty-eight point three, any discussion? Here no call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries.
Is that it?
One more motion required to accept a project.
Those are all the waivers then?
With waivers, I think that's it, right?
Is that all of them?
Um, eighty-eight point four, annual certification demonstrating continuing compliance with the standards of the Federal Communications Commission.
Yeah.
Federal Aviation Administration and American National Standard Institute.
I'll move to waive eighty-eight point four, second.
Motion second to waive eighty-eight point four, any discussion? Here no call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, motion carries.
Is that all of them?
That was all the requests, yeah.
Yeah.
So now I move to approve the project, uh, which the waivers already put.
So is this a special permit and a site plan or just a special permit?
This is just a special permit.
Special permit. Okay, I have, do I have a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Paul, seconded by.
Jason.
Jason, to accept the wireless, uh, project for Menusack Avenue, five Menusack Avenue.
With waivers.
With waivers. Any additions to each of the corrections? Here no call for the vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both say no, congratulations, good luck.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, build a tower, now get one on my end of the. No, it doesn't, no, it doesn't, if you look at the map. I, I outside the.
Six point one. But you want how many, you're going on this, on the.
All right, George, are you gonna head back tonight?
Still.
I say.
Six point one.
We'll get the decision out this week.
All right, great, thanks.
Six point one, communications. Uh, site plan application for one twenty-two Granite Street.
Nope, six point one.
My cell, my cell, I, yeah.
This is so.
A forty B housing proposal application before zoning board of appeal, planning board to make a non-binding recommendation. Uh, I think we have to schedule this. For.
January third?
Yeah, January. Was it the sixth?
It's not to be, this is just the planning board making a recommendation to the zoning board of adjustment.
Right.
And.
To the zoning board of appeals.
Zoning board of appeal.
Right, so, we still have to.
You wanna do an open public meeting?
We have an open public, it's an open public meeting.
On January third?
Is it the third?
January third.
January third, okay.
Elizabeth, I thought that we're here to present.
You look serious.
Well, it is.
That's cool guy waited all night.
Yeah.
It's just a non-binding recommendation.
I mean, we can, we can discuss it, but we should have an open public meeting.
Why are we having a public meeting for something that we don't have jurisdiction over?
Because we have to have, um.
All we're doing is making recommendations, we don't have to advertise to make a recommendation.
Well, here's, here's the thing, there's a, um.
What's this for?
A course on.
Forty B.
December twenty-first on forty B.
Um.
That I'm going to attend.
Okay.
And after that meeting, I'm gonna have a lot more information to present to the board.
Okay.
To.
So, would you like us to.
To make the progress.
Board to turn after that?
We, we could, I, I, we could discuss it and give them some input tonight and then have an actual meeting on the third.
Okay.
Because there, there is something that we looked at, that we see there are, there are issues. Okay? And, and I can, you know, I can bring that forward down, is, and I primarily, it's the parking lot and the road. Is your entrance road is, we haven't gotten a, an A and R on their property or a site plan to delineate, uh, the lots. Or the roadway.
I certainly, I can explain all of this, Mr. Chairman, and I can, I could be brief.
Okay.
We're, we're here to, to help you help the zoning board.
Right.
Um, because it is a comprehensive permit to chapter forty B. By the way, uh, for the record, Joe Faznala from Hancock Associates, run presenting North Star Family Services. Uh, in their application to the zoning board for a comprehensive permit to construct, uh, a building for fifteen affordable units. On the end of Marcela. So, with regard to the, the project itself, and might help if I just put up, um, put up the site plan. So this is a, this is an eleven acre site, it was subject of a definitive subdivision that this board approved in two thousand twelve for seven lots for the extension of Marcela. So now what's happening is, there's actually two projects. There's the first project, which is before the zoning board, which is North Star Family Services. And there will be a lot created for that lot one, which will be one acre, shown in light green there. We had originally decided, or, or proposed this as just two lots at the end. With chapter forty B, we don't need frontage, we don't, we can ask for waivers for all zoning requirements. So we could configure it in any way we, um, we feel is best and propose that to the ZBA. It was suggested that we create a right of way or modify the right of way that was, uh, prior proposed. Um, to provide frontage and a cul-de-sac for the second, the, the second, um, project, which is again, in the future and not before the zoning board at this time. That would have the balance of the site, the ten acres that are, that are left. Um, with regard to the, the right of way and the configuration. We're asking everyone to look at this as just a, a project and not necessarily a, a, a street extent, extension, or right of, a roadway, or any of that. It will all, it will all be private, um, and we're putting the parking where, where we can. Uh, we are establishing the right of way mostly for, for legal purposes, to be able to disseminate the two lots and, and for, and be able to, to have two projects. Under the, under chapter forty B, all, all authority goes to the zoning board, including division of the land. So if the creation of the lots and the right of way or modification of the right of way would be ultimately, um, spin to the, the zoning board as a definitive subdivision, lotting plan for their endorsement in your stead. Uh, under the comprehensive permit law, to be able to, to do that. Um, so we've, we've begun the process of, of getting feedback from departments. The most important of which, for lot configuration, parking, access, circulation is the fire department. Um, and we are providing the fire department kind of a, a, a way to come in, take a right into that, that parking lot in front of the building and loop around back onto the, um, that main drag. To get back out to Marcela, so they're satisfied that we've provided them ample access and we've kind of set up for this second project when that comes, comes down the, down the pipe. And that second project is not being proposed, will not be proposed by North Star Family Services. It's a, it's another developer entirely, entirely, it'll be a, a second chapter forty B project. Um, and, uh, really has, it, it, we're setting up for it, so we need to discuss it and be open about it, but right now it's not before the zoning board.
The major problem I see there is that, you know, and we'll go back to, and we'll make the report to the, to the ZBA, is that. You, you can do that, what you're, what you're saying is right, okay, you can do that, and you can put that parking lot right there. But in essence, you're putting a roadblock in, because before they do anything on the back, you're gonna have to move that parking lot. And you're gonna have to, to have an access road, because it's gonna be a safety issue. And you're gonna be backing, cars backing into a roadway, and it's not acceptable.
That's why, that's why I say it's.
Okay.
I'm, I'm asking everyone to look at it not as a roadway, because, and more, if, if we didn't propose a, a right of way. And if this becomes too problematic for everyone and, and we, we can't get past it, then, then we'll, we'll backtrack on the, the whole right of way idea. And it will be just a, a, an aisle in a parking lot. So we're asking you to look at it as a drive aisle in a parking lot and not a roadway. Um, and look at that from the standpoint of, is that appropriate for the number of vehicles that will be, that will be moving through the pro- project and the future project?
The future? What you have now is your project as is presented, it's fine, okay? If that's all you wanna do, well, we know you've told us that, you showed on your drawing extensive. So what I'm saying is, on, is a planning board, we try to plan, we try to look ahead, so when we see a major problem. Okay, even it's forty B, you, you have to have certain basic, uh, safety measures. And having that parking lot, this, it will delete that whole parking lot. It will delete your, your meeting, your requirement for your housing, and delete the requirements that you have for your people and your unit. Because you would have to have a road that's accessible to that back property. So if we address it upfront and say, hey, put the parking lot to the side, put it someplace else. But there, we see it, it's gonna be a problem. And, and it's really, it's good, yeah, could you do it? Yeah, you can, and you can go to the ZBA and they will probably accept it. Okay, I don't know if they will or not, but, but they probably will. But at the same time, is it good planning practices? No, it is not. And that's a way, way trying to get to, we, we say, hey, we'd rather be consistent, it's a good planning practice on a good site plan, that's a total out, it would never happen. Because it's forty B, you take exceptions, okay, and that's fine. And I don't mind certain exceptions, but this is a, a glaring one. A safety issue. It, it would back up traffic, it, it's just, it's just not feasible. So, I'm not sure with your, how much land, or how wet that is to the left, if you put that parking on the other side of the road, let the people cross the road with that parking. Or make some other accommodation.
Parallel spot.
I don't know, parallel parking, something different, but having that, that, I say there's blockage. And, and it's, and it's not good planning practices. Now, I, I know, I know the theory of going to the ZBA, because they're not planets. Okay, the, the quasi-judicial group, and they're a bunch of good people, but they don't do this, we do this for business all, all the time, and we understand it. So we see, when I see an issue, I've gotta speak out against it. The housing and what you're doing, I'm all for it, I've helped them in the past, and I'll help them in the future. But when I see it, it's gonna be a bottleneck, it's gonna be an issue, so address it now, well, it's it, I can do it, and that's my attitude at this point. Okay, so.
Okay, no, we, we, we appreciate the, the commentary, we'll, we'll take it under advisement and, and look at the configuration and see.
I mean, can you slide that building left and put more parking lot on the right-hand side? Or, you know, passive recreation on this side, can you put parking over there?
We can look at a number of things, I, I think we can.
I don't think we should rewrite the plan here, so can I make a motion that we just have Elizabeth send a letter to the ZBA expressing the concerns of the board and let them go from there?
Yeah, it isn't our, our vote anyway.
No, it's not our vote, but, and we can, like, we can do that, that's not a problem.
Okay, do you need a motion for that?
Do you wanna do everything now, tonight, or do you wanna wait until January third?
Well, the board, the zoning board will probably avoid it all by then, right?
I think it's January sixth, I think they're doing it January sixth.
No, 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 it's open, they got six months to do. Yeah, okay, and that's why I wanted to have a meeting, because I don't know if somebody from a, they have their meeting. And, and we would advertise that, we'll, we'll put it on a schedule, and I never know if somebody from the, a resident comes up with something new that we can, that we're not thinking of.
What do you need?
Plus, I plus.
How many?
We have time, so it's not an issue where we, you know, I don't wanna push this.
What do they need, they have fourteen units, any one and a half per unit?
It's, it's, it's.
One and a half.
Based on the, the bedroom, we need one and a half, um.
We need twenty-one units.
We need twenty-three spaces, because we have twenty-eight.
Yeah.
We need one and a half for one bedrooms and.
So again.
Uh, two bedrooms and anything over that, we need two per, and we've got three, three bedrooms.
You're, you're three bedrooms, you need.
So we need, we need twenty-three, we've got twenty-eight, so we have some room to work with and.
So I, I have a motion on the floor.
Yeah, and the other comment that I had was that people, that I've seen is, is, uh, we know this is all families. And, and they would love to see, uh, more of a play area or a delineated play area.
A larger.
For kids, or a larger play area, uh, that was an input that, uh, that came to us. Now, that's a little bit outside of planning, but that was an input that was made to me, uh, if we're doing this tonight.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
Uh, 'cause we know we are dealing with families rather than single.
You know, we're.
Single people mostly.
Yeah.
So, so they have it straight, that the board is mentioning the parking along the access road and the play area for now.
Yes.
Play area.
Tonight, but you reserve further comment first, for January third.
I think there's whatever you want.
Right. And just open it up, that's, that we can.
Does the, does the ZBA know we're doing this?
Yes, they know.
Because if the ZBA was doing our stuff, I wouldn't be happy.
I'm in a communication, I'm in a communication with them and I gave them the agenda and.
Okay.
Yeah. No, ZBA has a request that's, us to, and I was at their last meeting.
Okay.
So we have a six thirty on the third, we, we could, when you do your motion, um, we could do it for six thirty-five or six forty.
Well, it's not a meeting, right, so we'll just still be under communications?
Open public, open public hearing.
It's a public information meeting.
A hearing for what, I'm.
It's not a hearing, it's a public information meeting.
Of the public meeting.
But a meeting for what, where, where it's not a proposal that's before us, so what?
Yeah, it's, it's from, it's, the, the, the ZBA has requested an input from us.
Okay, and we're gonna send them communications and that, we're not voting on anything, so I'm, I'm not sure what we'd have a meeting for. I mean, if you think that's the right procedure, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, the public's gonna come here and tell us what, and we're gonna do all that.
I don't know.
I mean, seriously.
So they're gonna come complain because it's forty B.
It's communications, that's all I know. They're gonna have.
They don't realize they can do it.
Yeah, but I mean, the public is, is noticed on the ZBA hearings.
Of course. Of course.
Yeah.
And so they have plenty of opportunity for input, and if we have.
So your motion is to keep it under communications?
Yeah, because it, it's just our input, that's all we're passing on, right?
Yeah.
That's what the ZBA asks for, not the public's input through us, but our input.
Good point.
Okay.
Is there a proposal?
Well, we're gonna send no matter the, the, to, to, our, our, our input as of today, and then, uh.
But I, I do wanna respect Elizabeth's opportunity once she learns more.
I'm gonna learn a lot at that meeting and I might have to bring.
So if, if you have things to raise, let's keep it on the agenda, under communications, see if you have the opportunity to do that, and then we can send a final letter right after that.
Yeah, and it's always my position, uh, Mr. Chairman, that, that the input from other boards and staff is ongoing because the, the project name will change through, through the ZBA process. So if a new plan is generated that addresses your concerns, we would love you to see it and, and comment back to the board that, yeah, you did it, you fixed it, or whatever, whatever that be. Um, 'cause at the end, we want, we wanna address all the concerns and, from departments and staff and other boards and, and get it done.
Yep.
What happened to the seven house?
They just never, never did it.
But that was approved, so.
That was approved, but that, that project is, is died because of, of, of time.
Well, they needed a road, too.
Well, they had to put a road, they had to cooperate their money to put in the road. And evidently, evidently.
You're not putting a road further than you.
No, he's right now, he's just doing it to that parking lot, just what they got on that plan.
Right, right.
And the other thing is, I, and I'm not sure.
Do they have to, do they have to build that road to the end of that?
No.
No.
It's just, so, so it won't be a road that's actually built to.
No, no.
So then you're gonna have another one of these outback, how could they not have to build a road, I don't.
Well, that's what I'm getting to. They're gonna have, 'cause that was my next question, Tom, was, when I was going through your prints now, I, I may have missed it, okay? I did not see a road detail. Okay? Uh, and, and if that is gonna be proposed as a road, eventually out, that there should be a road detail, you know, in there on how you're gonna build that, so you can't just build it as a driveway.
Right.
It's gotta be built as a road.
No, and if we need, if we need.
And I just didn't see it, now, I didn't, I looked in your drawings a couple of times and.
It's not there, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, I didn't miss it, okay.
They're gonna have to, they're gonna have to build a road.
That's right, and that's what I'm saying, there's no road detail on the drawings.
They have to build a road.
That's right.
Somebody's gonna have to, whether it's them or the next guy.
Yeah, right.
Um.
No, where we are proposing a subdivision and we are provo- proposing a roadway and we need to build a road to a standard. If we choose to ask for waivers from the subdivision controllers, subdivision rules of rights, design standards, then those waivers are granted by the ZBA. And, and again, the ZBA not doing that on a regular basis is gonna look to the planning board to, just to comment on whether those are appropriate waivers. So we say, we only wanna put an inch of pavement in, you would come back and say, no, that's not a good idea.
That's, that's why I'm asking for a road detail. Okay?
Well, why would a road go to them? That would be us, wouldn't it?
No, because it's the ZBA, forty B is the, in the wisdom of the state legislature many years ago, decided that forty Bs, because planning boards were a pain in the butt and knew what they were doing, okay? They decided that we give it to the ZBA because they're a bunch of nice guys.
Based on the same terms as salt towns.
Okay, and they don't know what they're doing.
Back in nineteen sixty-nine.
Is it sixty-nine, I was trying to remember, it was a long time ago. And, and that's, that was given to ZBA, it's an authority, most of the ZBA is a part-time people in most towns, so they, and they, some of them are very good, but, uh.
No, having, having served a live ZBA for twenty years and, and had to go through forty Bs and being an engineer and knowing what planning boards do, I totally see your point, Mr. Trump.
Yeah, okay.
So my, my rec- I, I like, I compare this to, years ago, the ZBA used to give us, make, ask for our recommendations on variances, on their special permits, that's why I think it should go under communications. If they're requesting our recommendation, I think it should go under communications, just like they used to give us the variances and the set band.
I've talked to Elizabeth about that too, and we're gonna work on that.
And I would like something formal from the CBA saying they're looking for our recommendation, like the city council does.
Uh, did we get something, we got, we get.
Wait, so that again I was right.
We did, we get the whole package from them.
We got something formal from the CBA, right?
Saying please, that, that's it, then.
Um, I had to make a request for more information, but they were forthcoming with it when I, I remade the request.
Now, at the meeting, he said he was sending it to all departments for review, so.
Okay.
But what they originally sent wasn't enough information, I had to get more, I had to get more.
Okay. So a motion was, and when I was at the meeting, a motion was made that they would in fact forward it to all departments for further review, so.
And they did, but.
That included us, but, and then we asked, they, I looked at the package we got, it was insufficient. We asked for a complete package and then we finally got a complete package. But we went through this process, the last CBA we did was off of one seventeen back, should, ten years ago?
What?
There was a, a forty B on one seventeen up near Willett Street, remember what's on the left-hand side?
Oh, you mean Beventi's one.
No, it wasn't Beventi's one, I don't think it was Beventi, might have been, I don't remember who did it, no. But we went back and forth with the ZBA two or three times, and as we asked for changes, we'd submit them to the ZBA. We didn't change and we turned them back, so we, we had done this communication thing with the ZBA in the past.
All right.
Okay? I think that's sufficient for that.
So what was the motion from, or the?
Well, the motion is to be a communications and to forward today's information, uh, on parking, roadway, playground to the ZBA.
Okay, so forward it to them now, and let them know that we're gonna have communication on the third, we'll have more information forthcoming.
Yes. That is correct. That is correct.
Second.
Okay? The motion made in second, all, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, motion carries.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Six point two, metal lands at Willett Street, subdivision plan board to make recommendation for staff to seek estimate for a consultant for bond amount for road and related improvements. Uh, this requires a motion, uh, that we, uh, request Elizabeth to, to get, uh, estimates for a quote from, uh, engineering companies, so that they can do, uh, an evaluation on, uh, uh, what it would cost for them to complete the road. Okay, um, this is where we take, we take it away from, you know, the, and discussion with the DP, uh, DPW is, they have been giving it to us before and, uh, there've been some, not issues, but I, you know, let's get another, we've decided to get an outside consultant, and it's allowed by, uh, regulations to do that. So what I wanna do is first get a motion that allow Elizabeth to go and get quotes from different consultants. Once we get a quote, then we'll let the, then there'll be a motion to hire a, a consultant to move forward to give us an estimate, and then it'll be given to the company.
So most.
How many quotes does she have to get?
Three.
Three, so three quotes on how much they're gonna charge me to give us a estimate, yeah.
An estimate for an estimate.
Yeah, well, that's, that's what we gotta do, you know? Okay, any, any questions on that action? Okay, motion is in order.
Second.
Move by Paul, second, if I chase him, so any discussion? Here now, call for vote, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, motion carries. Um, directed report, six twenty point one.
I have a thought one for you, um, there's a paper in front of you about performance guarantees for site plan draft ordinance language. Um, we have noticed historically that, you know, with subdivisions, we can get a performance guarantee to make sure everything's done appropriately. But with a site plan, there are sometimes outstanding issues such as landscaping, um, internal, um, improvements and, um, just general following the, the notice of decision and, um, that the planning board set forth, and it's not always done appropriately or to completion. If we can get a performance guarantee for the work for site plans, we'll have something to hold over the developer to say, look, you've gotta complete X, Y, Z, um, and, and that way the project gets finished, um, and if it doesn't get finished, the board would have a, a right to exercise the money to, to release the money and get the project done, um, get the landscaping done or whatever is outstanding.
To get a detention pond.
It's a detention pond.
Basically, what, we just did it, you know, we just did it with, uh, with Willett Street. We could, we had a, there's gonna be a bond, and, what happens with site plans is, we put out a site plan, the building inspector goes in it and they approve the electrical, they approve the building, the plumbing and all the rest of that stuff. But the site plan, the road works, the driveway, the, the drainage, the cat, the detention basins, I never reviewed after. We just had one, we had, uh, last year we had a, a request by Leake Type over on Francis Street uh, for an addition, and, and they got the approval. But in going back to their drawings, there was supposed to be a second detention, now, this is thirty years ago. There was supposed to have been a second detention pond when they got that first approval. They put in one, they never put in the second. Okay? We just had a recent one over on Art Drive, where we had a developer built a place and it was gonna be a building for one use, well, it turns out that use didn't transpire. There were no loading docks, or there was one on, on the right-hand side. And on the left-hand side was all grass. Well, guess what? That grass is now a driveway and there's three loading docks on the left side. Okay? Well, there was no site plan bond to verify that he did the site plan properly. Okay? Then they went even further and the site, the original site plan showed no activity in the wetlands behind them, which was wetlands, and that has all been cleared, made into a parking lot. So that, but that's another issue, and the conservation commission is dealing with that. So because of those and, and other issues that we've had with no site plan, we felt we, I asked Elizabeth to, to go forward, get information. We got the, the law that was from the state that allows us to do that, and we looked at that, and it allows us to do this. And then we got, uh, different cities and towns, we looked at the different cities and towns and what they had. Some were very small and curt and didn't really cover it. This one was mostly.
City Amesbury had a good example.
And this one, was Abington?
Amesbury.
Amesbury, so we looked at one from Amesbury and, and with some changes.
And it's based on the.
But, uh, we pretty much took, lifted the one from Amesbury, and that's what we have before you tonight with the changes. So that's the purpose, uh, what we're trying to do is just to give us a little teeth on, on site plans so that it get done and that we have something to, that we can set a bond, uh, on, on the site work.
It's a great idea.
Okay?
So do you wanna look at the language tonight?
Yeah, if they can, if they had to look at it.
And there be some feedback or something?
It's up to them, where they wanna look at it. You could, if you wanna look at that now, we could refer it to the, we could refer it to the city council.
Could do a petition to the city council and have it get it moving.
As a petition.
This is it, it's right in front of you. It's a single sheet, December sixth, planning board meeting, preferred standing piece for site plan's draft or, or it's like.
Is it, yeah.
Is this for zoning or something? This is for zoning. This will be under zoning.
So this would be, what it is, is we have to vote it as a petition to the, to the city council. Now, what's gonna happen, we're gonna send it to the city council, they're gonna send it back to us. So we don't have to get every word and every T crossed and I dotted at this point. We wanna get ninety-eight percent, they'll look at it and then they'll send it back to us where we'll have to have a hearing.
And where it says section X, that's just the first paragraph, um, I don't have a, I don't have the, um, section numbers for it yet.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that will change, you know?
As depending where it goes in the.
Make a motion to send it to the city council.
Okay, I have a motion.
Petition.
I have a motion made in second to send the petition to the city council for a site plan.
On behalf of the.
On board.
On behalf.
On behalf of the planning board, yeah. Any further discussion on this? Here now, I call for the vote, all in favor say aye, opposed say no, motion carries.
Okay, I'm gonna do real brief, I've got three more things, but it'll take me a one minute. Um, seventeen seventy-one log drive, this is one of those, John just described all the problems on it, so I'm not gonna, I don't think you said the address, but you described all the problems. Um, I'm working with a developer on that, um, he wants to work with the conservation commission first and then come to the back to the planning board with a modified, um.
Site plan.
Site plan. So that's.
Who's the role?
Peter, or not Peter, um, David Exares.
Exares.
Um, next, citizens planning training collaborative, there's some classes, um, they're coming up this month. If anybody wants to attend one, I sent out the email to you, come to me, they're twenty dollars a piece, we have it in the budget, we've got money we need to spend. Um, so please, it, these are great education, if anybody wants to do the forty B one with me on December twenty-first, I would welcome another member to attend that with me.
Where?
It's online in your own home. So you can do it from anywhere. And then next, um, this is awesome, there's a new document available to the board called the Massachusetts Land Use Guidebook. Um, I've emailed in to see how much copies are, but we have it in the budget, I'm gonna buy everybody a copy and I'll pull you later to see whether you want electronic or hard. Um, but that's available and it's got everything, planning, all the, everything A to Z in planning in it in Massachusetts, it's great.
I thought this was it when I first got the packet after I read the, uh, and then I saw it was the special part of the, oh, yeah, I was like, oh, that's what I said, oh, we gotta do it.
Yeah, make a nice Christmas present.
So that's the thing I have.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, motion, John, in second.
Uh, I have a motion made, I'm thinking.